You mean it's seven o'clock, time for the East Line Planning, Planning Meeting. We have one Commissioner unable to attend today, so we have one alternate sitting. From right to left, just introduce yourselves.
Nick Menepace.
Cindy Collins.
Kirk Scott.
Rich Gordon.
Tom Fiddy.
Kevin Mills.
Thank you. Now time for the pledge of allegiance. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I have none.
None, okay. Next up is Public Delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the Commission about certain matters, issues or concerns related to approved subdivisions, and in-house proposals, or general topics of discussion over the comment. Agenda items, referrals, applications, subject to a decision by the Commission, a public hearing or litigation may not be discussed. The members of the Commission will not directly answer questions or make comments during delegations. Next up are Reports, Communications. Zoning Representative, did anybody attend the zoning meeting since the last meeting?
I think it was Brian.
Brian, okay.
Yeah, he's not here tonight.
Next up, Ex officio, Don McKenzie from the Board of Selectmen, no updates? Planning Director Gary Geischel, any updates?
The only thing I can report on is the Farm Meadow subdivision is still moving along. I suspect it'll be paved before this winter, as with Twin Valley, the other subdivision on the other end of town, I suspect they'll have their final course of asphalt down before the end of the winter. And I suspect they'll be in somewhere in December, January requesting their bond monies back. I believe the Orchards as well is finishing up. They got the Biner Course connected all the way through on Pumpkin Grove, so I suspect that'll be also paved sometime before the snow flies and plants close. I think they're going to want to get all of these things turned over to the town as soon as they can, being that they're so close and winter's on the way. So I would anticipate that in future agendas.
Okay, thank you. Subcommittees, who have anything? Chairperson report. I think I guess we have a change, have a change in the date for the meeting next month, November to Monday. You have been able to get a room for that, Gary?
Yes, I will work on securing the room and changing the date. I think it's safe to say we'll be canceling our November meeting as it stands now.
Yeah, and we'll be rescheduling it.
Rescheduling.
And looking to reschedule for the 10th.
For that Monday, okay. Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Next up, application for subdivision, re-subdivision. We had a, we closed a public hearing for this application last month. It's an, Kristen Clark applicant, English Harbor Capital Partners, application for a six lot conservation design district re-subdivision of 6.5 acres of land located at 237 Upper Patagansett Road. I'm sorry. I didn't do the minutes, I'm sorry. We have meeting minutes for last September. We've got the meeting in September. I just need a motion to approve or deny.
I did just want to, very nice meeting minutes.
Any discussion on the meeting minutes?
I think there might have been one typo. I think it was something like.
Nottingham Hills?
It was like East Lime or something on page one.
For typos unless they change the meaning of something?
Oh, yeah, no, I see it here. On page four, it just says text amendment T, and there's an extra T in it that says West Lime instead of East Lime.
That'll change.
Yeah.
What's that, page four?
Yeah, page four, under the zoning referral.
Item nine.
I thought there was a Nottingham Hills, might have been, might have been a typo for that.
I was gonna say, I thought it was great because they noted specifically that I came in late, and I thought that was good. Got here at 7:11.
So, as amended?
Well, there were only typos on them.
Any other discussion?
I didn't get anyone to make a motion.
I don't think anyone has. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the meeting minutes for September? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions?
Aye.
Three extensions, so it's three zero three.
We, I don't think we can approve.
We can't approve, I guess.
There's three extensions. And just to be clear again, you don't have to be here to approve the minutes.
Oh, you don't? Can't hold the minutes if you weren't here, you just kind of attest to the fact that you can leave the minutes, probably.
I came in 10 minutes late, and I think I can still attest it there, probably correct.
I watched on YouTube.
So that, that's good.
Okay.
So, you had a three zero three vote, so I think you need another.
Yeah, we need to do it again.
Motion failed.
Yeah.
So you need another motion.
Okay. I would like to make a new motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Next back, let's get back to the application, re-subdivision. That held, we closed a public hearing last month for Kristen Clark, English Harbor Capital Partners. It's an application for a six lot conservation design district re-subdivision, 6.5 acres of land located at 237 Upper Patagansett Road. The public hearing was held, and we have to, yes, this is an, well, we have to close it by, we're not gonna close it, we have to, we have to make a decision by this meeting, right?
Correct. 65 days to render the decision. I believe at the last meeting, the one item that was outstanding was a report from Ledge Light, which we received. It is September 8, 2025. Ledge Light has issued suitability recommendation for suitability of the previously stated plan. They did have a couple of notes. Just saying, please note that all lots require additional soil testing, project site review, and approval and development. Lot 32-2 is recommended suitable if and when the following plan issues are addressed. Note D under quote basis of leaching design states 40 foot of GST 6218 is provided, and note E states 45 feet of GST 6218 is provided. 45 feet is shown on the site plan. Additional soil testing is required prior to site review, approval, and development. So I believe those are things that you would provide along with your septic plan for any single family house. They'll have to just make sure those things are on the plan. Additional plan issues, there was, they indicated that there was no mention of utilities and whether they will be overhead or underground. As you know, per the regulations, all utilities are underground. Trench excavations less than 25 feet from the proposed leaching systems shall not be backfilled with free draining material, and the utilities shall keep a distance of at least five feet. The utilities in this case are proposed up the driveway, which relative to the leaching systems are fairly, I think, probably well over 25 feet from the driveway. So if that's a question here, we can go back and. There is a, for lot 32-2, the system you'll see is on the opposite side of the driveway. They also recommended that well arcs be kept on the property they serve to allow the neighbors full use of their properties, and all well casings should be located at least 10 feet from the driving surfaces or structures to prevent future damage and allow for future maintenance of the wells. So again, those are just concerns that they've noted that would have to be addressed with each individual lot as they are built out. In regards to Mr. Close's comments of July 22, he recommended, I believe, an operations maintenance plan. A draft of the proposed declaration, a common easement and maintenance plan was provided as Exhibit H in the design report. Again, Note 7 on page one of the Gesset and Associates PC Plan identifies that the maintenance agreement will be recorded in the Town of East Lime land records simultaneously with the Mylars of these plans. So that should address Mr. Close's concerns. He also, the plan also reflects that the runoff in Drainage Area B will continue flow in the existing easterly direction. And just in regards to Mr. Mulholland's comments regarding the 40-foot buffer. So the regulations do provide the Commission the discretion to either waive or reduce the buffer requirements based on the circumstances, so that they, so long as they continue to promote the intent behind the regulations into the conservation design subdivision. So in this particular case, you'll. So there's an existing driveway and to the, kind of the northeast here that goes up to an existing home. That driveway, which is on this parcel, is, or a portion of it, would be within that 40-foot buffer. I would note, we've approved other subdivisions similarly where the driveway was in the buffer, but we had the vegetation planted inside of that buffer to create the screen. I would note that this is a relatively heavily wooded lot. If you take a look at the plan, you can see the existing tree lines and the proposed areas of clearing. I think that buffer will be maintained for the most part throughout this entire subdivision. There's an existing buffer to the subdivision to the southeast, which in fact was a CDD subdivision on its own, so there's an existing 40-foot buffer in which that driveway runs through. And I believe we had them put the plantings on the opposite side in there. There was a row, a hedge row anyway, of Arbor Vitae. That should be, it's still there. Maybe the bulk of them are there.
Mr. Jim, I just had a quick question for Mr. Geischel.
Sure.
I should have brought this up last week, but I, I believe it is in here, but I couldn't find any specific mention. Was there any need of this design to have to do, because I believe we did a report from the inland waterways about this, this property as well. Was there any need for a riparian buffer, or is that?
I would say no. A riparian buffer is really geared toward streams and rivers.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious, because I don't, honestly, we're talking these ones, I'm like, I don't know if that was mentioned, or if that was at all in the inland wetlands report, but.
No.
It's not far from water, but it's not.
Yeah, there's, there's no wetlands on, on the site, I don't believe. So they did not need a wetlands permit for any of the proposed activity here. That's not to say there aren't wetlands in proximity. There, you know, could there be a regulated area that skirts a portion of this? It's possible.
I believe there is, and that's just why I was asking, but it's, I guess it's deemed not close enough to have been an issue.
Even if, I would say that they're not required to make applications for the subdivision to the inland wetland agency if there's no wetlands on the property, even though there might be regulated areas. But it doesn't preclude them from having to apply to the inland wetland agency for a permit to conduct activities within that area. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I just, if the Chair, the three Mr. Chair, just, do we have a reason of how close it has to be? Because I'm, I'm under the impression that it's just.
So we have a 300-foot upland review area?
Okay.
So I, I do suspect on Nottingham, Upper Kensington, away from the road, there is a, in between, I believe, the neighboring property here, which is the property that was already previously subdivided.
Yeah.
Butts that wetland, that wetland system skirts the last lot on that sub, I think it was a five lot subdivision. So that arc might swing basically, probably on, it would be the last lots, I think.
Yeah.
On here, probably these in the back. It might swing over a portion, maybe a portion of their septic falls within that arc. It could be well over 300 feet.
Okay. And I, I will say, because I, I meant to look into that before, and I, that is my fault that I did not, but I was just curious, if, so if it's within 300 feet, even if it's not, then we would ask them to do some type of mitigation for wetland, or is that saying that we have, if it's directly abutting it, we still wouldn't do anything?
If, if it was directly abutting it, a good example would be the Lake Point subdivision, the six acres off of Heritage Road. There was a strip of wetlands that was conveyed out to the East Lime Land Trust, took that portion of wetlands off the property. So technically, there's no wetlands on this property being subdivided. They do not need to apply to the wetland agency for determination or even a report to be furnished, because there's no wetlands on the property.
Okay.
It is within proximity. All of those lots are regulated, so each individual house lot, you will need to come in and apply for an inland wetlands permit to be constructed.
Okay.
So that could be either approved by myself as the agent, as I'm authorized to issue permits within the upland, or it could be issued by the Commission if it went in front of them.
And just, just one more. So that is for the individual lot construction?
Correct.
Okay.
The driveway, or any, any of the activities within 300 feet of the water course.
Okay. So, any construction within the, the lot would need that approval if it's within the proximity?
Correct.
Okay. I really appreciate you answering that. I appreciate everyone on the board.
Such a clarification. We have, the meeting is on November 10, so we have, we can, you know, 65 days to render decision November 12, so we have until next month to render a decision, so 65 days after the public hearing. So we don't have to make a decision tonight. Our meeting is on the 10th.
You would have two days of leeway, but.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. When I was here for the last meeting as well, I just wanted to get clarification because of its, I guess it's proxim, I don't know if I'm using the right term, but the proximity to a wetlands, even though it's not actually on the property.
Correct. So statutorily, there's no need to, they didn't need to go to the wetland commission. If any portion of that arc crosses these, these lots, which I'll have to, when I review the application for a building permit, we'll make that determination, and if it needs, a wetland permit, they don't have to apply for it.
Does, if, if one, I was, does clearing count as construction? I would assume that it does, but I just want to see. So if they went through and cleared the lots, does that count as beginning construction? It would need approval for me?
I would consider it the start of construction.
Okay.
In this particular case, if they were clearing for an agricultural use.
As we help, agriculture use is different, can we stand?
So what the clearing is actually for would probably dictate the regulatory process.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Sure.
We just said that one of the lots is within the 40-foot buffer. Is there a waiver for that on the, in the exhibits?
I don't believe they requested a waiver, but I believe the regulations indicate that they can either waive, or you have the discretion to reduce it. So I don't know that that actually needs to be in writing, because it's not explicit.
Had that been specifically addressed as a question to the Commission, or is it just, by the way, the road is in the 40-foot buffer?
The, the proposed road.
Okay.
The proposed, I think portions of the proposed road are within the.
So that'll come back to us before they actually build it, then? And then, and then we would discuss the buffer at that time?
No, we would, we would iron that out now as part of this decision. We wouldn't wait, they wouldn't be coming back for any further approval. So we'd have to, whatever you, if you approve this, this is the layout that's being proposed. So we would have to modify, if I can take section 23. Section 23.5B of the zoning regulations talks about the buffers in a CDD, Conservation Design Development. And it says here, the planning commission may waive or reduce these requirements if it can be shown that such a modification will further the purposes of the conservation by design development. So looking at this, I believe that this area here between lot, I think it's 32-1, is the closest in which the driveway is to the property line, and you'll see there's an, this existing vegetated buffer that's already there that they're keeping. That's 10 feet. So there'll be an existing 10-foot buffer, the driveway, and you have an existing 40-foot buffer on the other side of the property line with the driveway through it as well. It's too bad they all couldn't share the same driveway, but it is what it is.
Mr. Jim?
This is a, still planned to be as a private, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The town will not maintain this.
Do we have the ability to, at this rate, I mean, I don't ask them to change this? I mean, we've already kind of heard about this one already. I don't know, because I know many of the people on the board were not here last week, but do we even have the ability to ask them to make this change, or would it still be under the deadline of the 60 days?
So at this point, any changes that you want, or modifications to the plan that you would like to see, you would have to condition as a part of the approval, being that there's no more discussion, we're kind of out of time, we have to.
Okay. So with the Ledge Light, there was an issue with the septic system, that's, I think they didn't have, they still have an issue with that, I guess, that was determined?
No, no, I just read you, that we received on September.
You received that, but they, they're fine, and they didn't want to.
Correct. They, their review recommend, gives a recommendation for suitability of the previously stated plan. Lots to accommodate the Ledge Light District subdivision submission requirements, Connecticut Public Health Code, section 19-13-B103E, as follows, and they indicate lots 32, 32-1, 32-3, 32-4, and 32-5 are recommended suitable in their current conditions. Okay, please note, all lots require additional soil testing prior to site review, approval, and development.
Okay. I don't think there were any other follow-up that we need to look at in terms of other, other department requirements? That was basically, that was basically the only.
The only, yeah, I think the only outstanding issue would be the buffer, and that because the Commission has to either reduce it. So I think to waive it would be to eliminate it altogether, the fact that there is a 10-foot buffer at minimum, and it increases as you move along the driveway. So I do believe the Commission has the discretion to reduce it. Doesn't eliminate it, but you could reduce it to no less than, say, 10 feet. And that would be in keeping with the proposal. At the same time, it's in keeping with the subdivision that was approved next door. If you look at, you can see on the plans, here, these dotted lines are, is the approximate, you know, driveway on the parcel next door, and it's got about 10 feet between the edge of pavement and what looks like the property line. Is there still a wall there? It's very similar in terms of character.
So I wasn't here last week, and I apologize for that, but was this the plan that you guys presented during the, the public hearing? And when you guys presented it, was, was the road being in the buffer discussed explicitly? Because, because that, that, I mean, if we waive it after the fact, the optics of it might be a little, you know.
I think it was pointed out, Bill, the zoning official, Mulholland, indicated that the application must comply with section 23, the zoning requirement regulations. The se, the section provides regulatory controls to enable the use of a CDD design. Section 23.5B, buffers, provides for a 40-foot buffer along the perimeter of a CDD unless waived by the planning board. This section also provides standards for buffers, section 23.6, procedures for open space requirements. So I think it was mentioned there as part of his comments, that there was a buffer concern, and to address it, I believe, their opinion is that it runs, you have an existing CDD to the south, or south, southeast, with similar conditions. I would, as I pointed out, we have other similar subdivisions in which we've done similar reductions and/or modifications. The, I would just note that the shoulders along this driveway are nearly 200 feet of mature vegetation. Along the northern property boundary, there's 30 plus, 38 plus acres of open space. It's already been conveyed by their client to the East Lime Land Trust for passive recreation. So all of that vegetation to the north is at an elevation of, I think, was it say 60 feet? But it's a good 30 feet above these houses. So all of this entire hill is kind of wooded. You can see here, here's the tree line. There's a little bit of open area here. Stonewall, it's, there's a good buffer along that northern. So with the exception of this driveway, this, this portion of driveway, and maybe that's 100 feet, 200 feet?
I don't know if I see the comments from Mr. Mulholland.
It should have been Exhibit 21.
Sorry if I missed that.
I don't see his letter here, but I also don't see Alex's. I have Exhibit 21. These are Bill's comments here.
Okay.
And in regard, regards to his last comment regarding the open space at 30%, the dedicated open space in the Nottingham Hill subdivision is addressed in Exhibit F as 80.65 acres having already been provided, which is approximately 75% of the 107.2 acres located within the Nottingham Hill subdivision boundaries.
So if we were to approve it, we would need, I believe we would need either a waiver of the buffer requirements, or.
You, you need to. You need to waive, I don't believe you can waive it, because they didn't request a waiver. So I believe what they're requesting is a reduction.
Reduction in the amount.
So you'd have to approve it as, you know, you'd be, if you were approving it as proposed, or approving it with a reduction to a minimum of 10 feet, so that's 30-foot reduction.
Okay. Were there any other conditions that we would? Were there any other conditions that we would decide to buffer that we approve it?
I would say you're probably going to need an erosion and sedimentation control bond for construction. Previous applications, we estimate anywhere from twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars per lot. There's also the construction of the driveway. I'm not sure where to begin with that. I had to measure this out, my guess is it's a lot shorter than what we saw with the Lake Point subdivision, which was about a thousand feet, and I recall that estimate coming in at about a hundred thousand on that. I don't know what the E and S, I'd have to go back and look. So I'm, I'd guess it's probably going to be slightly higher than twenty-five hundred or five thousand for the driveway.
So in, in terms of the bond, or?
In terms of the bond for E and S on the driveway, I would recommend that the amount be set by the town engineer, so the amount is satisfactory to him. And then the the form of which that bond comes in, be it cash, surety, passbook savings, or letter of credit, that however, you have to accept them all, so it just be, you know, as acceptable to the town of East Lime and planning commission.
Anybody else have any comments? So I don't know if people feel comfortable making a decision tonight, or they, I mean, we can still.
I don't know what would be different in November, I guess. I mean, we could put in a conditional requirement, but I really don't know, I mean, in a month, it's still going to be not.
Right, people missed the meeting last month or whatever.
Like an oversight on our part and their part.
Yeah, I, I, in my review of the application, I know you don't have a memo from me, and I typically generate that, unfortunately, I did not have ample time to draft that up. But my review of the application is that it complies with the subdivision regulations, with the exception of this buffer. The open space, I do believe this was a part of the Nottingham Hill subdivision property at one time. So I think in terms of open space, yes, they can claim that it's already been dedicated. So I think with the, if the commission's willing to reduce the buffer requirement, I don't see any other issues outstanding with this. They're going to have to go through all the same building permit processes for each lot, wetlands review, zoning review, building standard ledge light. I essentially think this creates five additional housing lots in town.
Sure.
Can you zoom in again and show us like where that, where that buffer is not being met?
So the existing driveway, it's already paved up to this house over here where the compass is.
Okay.
And then you've got the, again, existing driveway here, this might be over forty feet from the property line there. But this proposed paved driveway, all the way back, is going to be within that buffer until you get out into here, then it's outside of it. This is this line is ninety-two feet, so I'm going to suspect that's just over forty feet, that's well over forty feet from the property, but as you come back to this point, it's within ten feet.
And then the dotted line to the bottom of it is, is an existing or proposed?
Existing driveway to these, this house here and the lots in the back.
Okay, thank you.
Gary?
Yes.
Does our waiver of this buffer apply to any future project?
No.
In this, on this lot?
It's specific to this application. So it wouldn't, other applications, it wouldn't, they'd have to, again, either ask for a waiver or the reduction. If they, on a separate piece of property is what you're asking, would this waiver carry?
Is there any need to specify where in our remarks of the buffer, on the south side or anything?
Certainly helpful to clarify what the reduction's for and where, you know.
It doesn't apply to the whole property, just the section?
I would just say it applies to the bottom section, because you, you have the buffer on the northern side. You can see they put the building setback line at that forty feet. So all along the top, it's being adhered to, with the exception of this house, because of the driveway, and they do this, this little bit of grading here.
So we've, we approved it with the exception of a ten-foot buffer on the southern border?
Property line, and then I would say almost, I mean, there's, there's an existing tree line here that's going to be maintained. So that's appro, I would say approximately five to ten feet there as well on the northern
Okay.
property line.
Thank you.
Specific to lot thirty-two dash one.
Mr. Chan?
Anybody else have any?
What are some conditional options that I forgive, I don't know if we've ever had it, where it's conditional on this, of what would be a conditional, whether it is acceptable, I just, you know, I don't know what would be acceptable for most of these ones.
Right.
So things, things like if they were proposing a, I don't know, I'm just trying to come up with an example, a gravel driveway, and we discovered that it was over ten percent, so we'd say, okay, well, the condition has to be paved.
Yeah.
What you're really looking to do is, do you need to modify this plan to meet our regulations? If you don't, then great, the only modification that I see that right now that's being needed is the reduction on the buffer. Aside from that, this, I believe, meets the regulations and their intent. That's really all I have to say on that. So I don't have to help clarify, but other conditions are that they, you know, were required to post a erosion sedimentation control bond. I would recommend at least twenty-five hundred for each major lot, and probably, as I said, I'm going to guess it's going to be somewhere around maybe fifteen or possibly twenty for E and S on this driveway. That might be most of the cost of construction. But again, by conditioning that, by saying it's, the condition is, so it's the amount satisfactory to the town engineer. He gets to review it before they post it, and all of that has to be done prior to the filing of mylar's on the land record. So that would be one condition, that those items are fulfilled before they file them.
So it's basically, let's confirm what you said, just erosion sediment control bond, usually about two thousand dollars, you said, and?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, you said, I'm sorry.
I think these are post-COVID times, so twenty-five is even low, but it works. That was the Lake Point subdivision, we used twenty-five hundred.
Basically, the buffer issue and the bond would be here. Is any other, is there just any other conditions on the, have a motion to approve?
You have a motion to approve?
Any other?
I think we have to make a motion.
Any other modifications or whatever? Conditions to the approval?
Because I, I can go back and look at the operations maintenance plan. Alex, one recommendation, he just recommended that the rain gardens and things like that, the interlocking concrete pavers, anything that they use that way, that those things need maintenance, and that that should be clearly spelled out in the O and M plan. So maybe you just can add the condition that the operations and maintenance plan be updated to clearly describe the roles and responsibilities of the property owners and proper maintenance of the rain gardens, the permeable interlocking concrete pavers, PICPs, lawn areas, et cetera, which contribute to the treatment and attenuation of stormwater. It should also clearly state who's responsible for the maintenance of the driveway, which I believe it does, it's shared. And then we'll just reiterate that garbage and recycling pickup will only occur on Upper Paddock Anset Road. So they will have to bring their cans out to the road.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Does anybody feel comfortable making a motion or?
I say that we, oh, sorry, I got distracted there. I say that I make a motion to approve based on condition on the, we have it as the, excuse, with the conditional for the, to, I'm not sure if I'm saying the right word here, for the reduction of the buffer zone base.
So you're looking for a motion to approve with the following modifications, and that's a reduction to the buffer zone to a minimum of ten feet along the southern property line and approximately the same on lot thirty-two dash one and thirty-two along the northerly, northwesterly property line. In that case, it's actually two lines, though, property lines, yeah.
Yes, it's a lot to say, I'm sorry.
And an erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of thirty, twenty-five hundred dollars for each lot. In addition to an erosion sedimentation control bond for the construction of the driveway and an amount satisfactory to the town engineer in a form acceptable to the town of East Lime.
Yes.
What you said.
Yes.
I'm so moved. That is exactly what I would like to have.
There's your motion.
My motion. Yes.
Do you have something about the rain garden too, you mentioned?
So we have some discussion, that motion's going to remake the motion, oh boy.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry about that, everyone, I did not include the rain garden, sorry.
So you'd have a motion to?
So I need to, I'm sorry, I need to make a new motion. And I would appreciate if we can have that completely read back for the same one, but with the inclusion of the rain garden in it. It was. Read back? Yes. We've already finished writing it down.
I'm writing it, so, yeah.
I appreciate that both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My longest amendment.
And recycle at the carpet at the road.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that not a part of the original? They said they're going to bring it up to.
All right, I think I got it here. So you're looking at a motion to approve with the following conditions and or modifications. One, the buffer required by section twenty-three five B may be reduced to no less than ten feet along the southerly property line. Two, the erosion sedimentation controlled, erosion sedimentation control bonds in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars per lot shall be posted with the town of East Lime. An erosion sedimentation control bond in the amount satisfactorily to the town engineer and in a form acceptable to town of East Lime for the construction of the driveway shall be provided. The O and M plan shall be updated to clearly describe the roles and responsibilities of the property owner in property maintenance of rain gardens, permeable pavers, lawn areas, et cetera. All applicable items shall be completed prior to the filing of mylar's on the land record. Motion, Cindy?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
One second.
Abstaining? Yes.
So it's five zero one?
Next up, we have another two-lot subdivision application on forty-nine Brainerd Road, is an application for two-lot subdivision of approximately fifty-two point seventy-nine acres of land located at forty-nine Brainerd Road. There's no public hearing required for this. Talked about it last week, I think it went for, we had an extension because we needed information from ledge light.
Correct, which we received.
So I have an email here I received from Danielle Holmes dated today, addressed to JP Marine. Hi JP, I'm copying Janet and Gary here, and I made a clear error in the letter, it is recommended approval for lot two. A new one point six acre parcel being created from the existing forty-nine Brainerd Road, forty-seven point seven acres. So she has looked at it and provided that approval, if you will.
I don't know if that was in our, it was in the Town Hall website under materials.
What are you looking for specifically?
No, I just noted the archaeological studies in the Town Hall website under materials.
I'd also note they received approval from the wetland agency as well. As this was a, I believe a conventional application?
Was it conventional?
Yeah. We did this as a, I think, CDD by deferring, put the note on the plan, open space is being deferred. Note four, per section 7-2-2, open space deferred, the open space dedication to the land depicted on this map is hereby deferred to a later date when somewhere all remaining land is resubdivided. Yeah, they're doing, it says conventional. They've got subdivision design equals conventional right there. Anyone have any questions?
Well, it's a part of the one, right? Is essentially sold this one part of the lot?
Can you put the plot where we're subdivising? I can't really see it very well on this one.
Yeah. So I'll start here. So on page one here, you've got the overall site and the locust map, the end of Brainerd Road, and the train tracks to the south, Wetlands and Marsh south of them. And this proposed lot, here's the overall site plan, is right at the end of the driveway, the Brainerd Road ends somewhere about in here, the lot's right in, right off the edge of that. There's an existing drive to the existing home and cell tower that are on the property. And then here's the lot, here you can see Brainerd Road, if I zoom in to that spot there. There's a little jog in the property lines blowing up right here, this is town right away. Private, I think that's gonna be state land there.
If you want some ledge light, it looks like there is some recommendations, although not requirements on, all proposed well arcs should be kept on the property, they serve to allow neighbors full use of their properties, and well casings should be located at least 10 feet, I guess, from the driving surfaces, and are structures to prevent further damage, allow for further maintenance of the wells. And the designer should take into consideration the location of potential future water treatment, water, wastewater discharge systems. Should that be part of the conditions, although it's not, doesn't, I guess they say it's not a requirement.
Right, I, I wouldn't necessarily add those as conditions, I think they're recommendations from them, that seems to be similar boilerplate language that we just read on the previous application. So I think it's just a common generic statement that Ledge Light makes, is that make sure that you're at least 10 feet from driving surfaces to prevent damage, doesn't mean that you can't be, just that they're looking to recommendation. So I don't know the health code well enough to say whether you can or you can't be, but I'm not seeing that it says that I couldn't be closer than 10 feet, so I, you could. But obviously, you know, taking into consideration future subdivision is what she's saying, where those systems might lay out relative to this lot. But you'll note that the well arc on this lot is completely within this property, that the lot that's being proposed, which is 75 feet in radius, and it's probably 100 feet or so from the proposed system. I suspect that they probably wouldn't have an issue, being that the lots, remaining land area is 49.3 acres. Defining space for adequate space for septic and well, out of 49 acres, I think they'll be able to do it.
It does say on there additional plan issues on Ledge Light. Is that stuff we have to do conditional? I think it doesn't talk about utilities and stuff like that.
No, again, utilities are, by our regulations, required to go underground, so I believe they'd be coming in underground right from the pole, so you'll see there's this AT&amp;T pole 2072, and he's got a wire shown there for proposed underground utility. So I think that's addressed.
Anybody else have any further comments or questions? So if we approve the subdivision, I mean, I noticed you wrote, you wrote up last month you may have a plan discussing erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $2,000, I find that acceptable, $1,000, yeah.
Yeah.
It was under the archaeological survey, but we-
You might want to make it consistent with the previous one that you just approved, make it 2,500.
Make it 2,500.
Just to be consistent.
So the archaeological survey, we got the response back, so it really is no-
They conducted it, and again-
Add that as a condition at this point.
Yeah, you just heard JP indicate that it did not meet the criteria for national register eligibility.
So do you think there's anything else we can, we should add besides the erosion and sedimentation control bond as a condition at this point?
They'll have to deal with Public Works, and they'll have to post a bond with them for the apron, so that's not really, gonna really affect us, they're, there's no other public improvements. I would say they probably need to provide an O and M plan for the rain garden, something we're not to start requiring with the rain gardens, is O and M plans, because otherwise there's really no surety that they're maintained.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Does anybody feel comfortable making a motion?
It's a lot to conclude, yeah, can we have it read back afterwards?
You have some last month, but kind of worry about the archaeological, I guess. I guess like, something about the rain gardens. They had a, they had a, last month they did an extension because they won the Ledge Light report.
I'll make the motion. Hereby move to approve the application known as the application of the Roderick M. Cornish Revocable Trust for a two lot subdivision of approximately 52.79 acres of land, zoned RU40 on the property located at 49 Brainerd Road, Eastlime Assessor's Map 7.4, Lot 21, Niantic, which is further subject to the following administrative requirements and required modifications to the site plan and/or other materials submitted in support of this application. Number one, erosion sedimentation control bond in the amount of $2,500 shall be posted with the town in a form acceptable to the Town of Eastlime Planning Commission prior to the issuance of any zoning or building permit and the start of any site work, including but not limited to exploratory test pits, clearing, grubbing, filling, and grading. Number two, the applicable items above shall be accomplished prior to filling, prior to filing of the subdivision on land records or other documents of the planning approval, and no site work shall be, shall commence until all applicable conditions are satisfied. Three, the O and M plan should be developed and detail the use and maintenance of the rain gardens.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
Any extensions? Thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Mr. Chairman, commission members and staff, thank you very much for your time this evening. Very much.
Next up, we have a resubdivision for Catbird Lane, Kristen Clark applicant, Hathaway Farm owner, application for resubdivision of approximately 4.1 acres and waiver request from section 2.3, stormwater management plan of land located at Catbird Lane. I think this requires a public hearing, and I guess we're just having a scheduling of a public hearing in November.
11.
November 10th, or whatever.
10th, sorry, it'll be the 10th.
Yeah.
Moving our meeting.
You were requesting more information, you told you talked to the attorneys about the open space question, I think that was.
I'm still waiting on clarification from that, representation, but I'll take that, I will move forward.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a zoning referral, application of the Eastlime Zoning Commission for proposed text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations by adding section 6.1, 6.7, agricultural farm poultry, six, six or less, and by amending section 25.5 table of minimum controls. It looks like they have a public hearing scheduled for November 6th, that's before our next meeting. Gary, do you have any comments on that?
Not immediately, I'm certainly supportive agricultural uses, by amending this section, which would allow six, I guess chickens or less, you shall be on a lot, not less than one acre, so you could, you know, I think it would allow someone who's got an acre or more to have six chickens or less.
Mr. Chair, I just, I guess I don't really understand, and forgive me, because I'm trying to look at the, like, we already have properties that have chickens, so I don't, I don't understand.
Are you trying to reduce it or?
I'm not 100% clear, I'll have to talk to Mr. Mulholland with the, you know, intent here is, but I do see this minimum one acre required, R12, R10 zones require 10,000 square feet, so when you look at the minimum lot areas in the R10 and R12, I suspect that's probably what this is referring to, so if you had an acre in the R10 and R12, why couldn't you have chickens? Which I think maybe they're precluded right now, so I suspect, my suspicion-
Are we enforcing that? I've been to a lot of houses and I've seen it with chickens in my life.
And part of that might be, so rather than running around trying to enforce you can't have chickens, maybe it makes more sense to look at the societal behaviors and say, hmm, should we modify our regulations to allow people to have chickens? They obviously want chickens. What's wrong with having chickens? And if they can do it in a sanitary manner and not adversely impact their neighbors, then have that. So I, maybe that's what they're getting at here, I don't know, and I think maybe-
Is it gonna reduce the amount of acreage that they, because I know I've seen chickens too on less acreage.
Well, this is saying the minimum is at one acre, so I don't think it's looking to reduce it any further, I think it's saying if you're gonna be in the R10 or R12, you need an acre of land to have at least six chickens. And you can't have more than that.
Or like have-
Yeah.
Whereas if you were in, say, the R40, R80, or the R new 200, right, you, you had an acre of land, I guess you could have 12 chickens. Because you're in a different zone.
I mean, I love microfarming, I think it's amazing, I personally love buying eggs and all that from that one too, so it's wonderful. I guess I'm, I guess I, this is, I know this may be outside, but POCD doesn't even have anything that would contradict this, but-
of the subdivision on land records or other documents of the planning approval and no site work shall be, shall commence until all applicable conditions are satisfied. Three. Uh, the O N M plan should be developed and detail the use and maintenance of the rain gardens.
Thank you. Give me a second. Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Any extensions? Thank you, so the motion passes six to zero.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members and staff, thank you very much for your time this evening, very much.
Next up, we have a, a re-subdivision for Catbird Lane, Kristen Clark applicant. Hathaway Farm owner, application for re-subdivision of approximately four point one acres and waiver request from Section two-three. Stormwater management plan of land located at Catbird Lane. Um, I think this requires a public hearing and I guess we're just having a scheduling of public hearing in November.
Eleven.
November tenth, or whatever.
Tenth, sorry, well, it'll be the tenth.
Yeah.
Moving our meeting.
You were questioning more information, you talked to the attorneys about the open space question, I think that was.
I'm still waiting on clarification from that, on representation, but, uh.
Okay.
Once I obtain that, I will move forward.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a zoning referral, uh, application of the East Line Zoning Commission for proposed text amendment to the East Line zoning regulations by adding Section six point one. Six point seven, one and ten, six point seven, agricultural farm poultry, six, six or less, and by amending Section twenty-five point five, table minimum controls. It looks like they have a public hearing scheduled, uh, for November sixth, that's before our next meeting. Um, Gary, do you have any comments on that?
Not immediately, uh, certainly supportive agricultural uses. By amending this section, which would allow six, I guess chickens or less. You shall be on a lot, not less than one acre. So you could, you know, I, I think it would allow someone who's got an acre or more to, uh, have six chickens or less.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just, I guess I don't really understand, and forgive me, because I'm trying to look at the right, like, we already have properties that have chickens. So I don't, I don't understand.
Are you trying to reduce it or?
I'm not a hundred percent clear, I'll have to talk to Mr. Mulholland, um, with the, you know, intent here is, but I do see this minimum one acre required, R twelve, R ten zones require ten thousand square feet. So when you look at the minimum lot areas in the R ten, R twelve, I suspect that's probably what this is referring to. So if you had an acre in the R ten or R twelve, why couldn't you have chickens? Which I think maybe they're precluded right now, so I suspect, my suspicion.
I've been to a lot of houses and I've seen it with chickens.
And, and part of that might be, so rather than running around trying to enforce you can't have chickens, maybe it makes more sense to look at the societal uh, behaviors and say, hmm, should we modify our regulations to allow people to have chickens? They obviously want chickens. What's wrong with having chickens? And if they can do it in a sanitary manner and not adversely impact their neighbors, then have that. So I, maybe that's what they're getting at here, I, I don't know, and I think maybe the.
Is it gonna reduce the amount of acreage that they, because I, I know I've seen chickens too on less acreage.
Well, thi- this is saying the minimum is at one acre, so I don't think it's looking to reduce it any further. I think it's saying if you're gonna be in the R ten, R twelve, you need an acre of land to have at least six chickens. Um, and you can't have more than that.
Well, like have. Yeah.
Whereas if you were in, say, the R forty, R eighty, or the R new two hundred, right, you you had an acre of land, I guess you could have twelve chickens. Because you're in a different zone.
I mean, I, I love micro farming, I think it's amazing. I personally love buying eggs and all that from that one tube, so it's wonderful. I guess I'm, I guess I, I, well, this is, I know this, this may be outside, but the P O C D doesn't even have anything that would contradict this, but what is our manner of enforcement with this?
So Section six is the R twelve district, so that's what they're changing?
I'm looking at the twenty-five, it seems to just get into some of the technicality here for it, but again, like, I guess it, it, I, I guess it doesn't really preclude us for this, but if we have no manner of really enforcing this, like, I, I feel like I've seen houses that have less than, less than an acre, or.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly would be a challenge for Mr. Mulholland, as a zoning official, he'll have to lease it, uh, but I think what this is going to do, um, six point one, uh, if you look at that six point one six, that would be a permitted use by right.
Yeah.
Whereas agriculture or farm uses, including the raising of livestock and poultry, six point two point two is a special permit use.
Yeah, okay.
So you could do six or less by right. Go get a special use permit if you're in the R ten or twelve, or in this case, the R twelve.
This may not relate to the P O C D, but I, I do ask, we might need some clarification of what exactly agriculture or farm poultry mean then? I mean, I love the idea of having this one, but, I mean, it's not really.
You want a definition of agriculture?
Well, I mean, what do we define as that currently, I guess? I am aware of what agriculture means, I just don't know what we define as there, I don't know. I mean, yeah, but we can also.
So the zoning regulations do not define it, however, our wetland regulations do. I would, now zoning would necessarily turn to the wetland regulations for a definition. But, uh, they would probably go to Black Law's dictionary and then to a Webster's dictionary for the definition of agriculture. But I would point to agriculture in the statutes as we know it typically, um, in Section four of our regs. It's defined as grazing, farming, define that, right? Nurseries, gardening, and harvesting of crops and farm ponds of three acres or less, essential to the farming operation, activities conducted by or under the authority of Department of Environmental Protection. So that's farming, um.
I just know that we've gotten into some issues of what is considered agriculture.
And so farming as we define it in wetlands shall be consistent with the definition as noted in Section one dash one Q of the Connecticut General Statutes. And that's in Appendix A, which I have, and I can, it's, it's a whole paragraph here, happy to read it to you, but, uh. The words agriculture and farming shall include cultivation of the soil, daring, forestry, raising and harvesting of any agricultural or horticultural commodity, including the raising, shearing, feeding, caring for, training, and management of livestock, including horses, bees, poultry, fur-bearing animals, and wildlife, and the raving or harvesting of oysters, clams, mussels, other molluscan shellfish or fish, the operation, management, conservation, improvement, or maintenance of a farm and its buildings, tools, and equipment, or salvaging timber, or cleared land up brush, or other debris left by storm as an incident to such farming operations, the production or harvesting of maple syrup, maple sugar, or incident to such farming oper, oh, I'm sorry, regret that. Any agricultural commodity, including lumber, as incident to the ordinary farming operations. Or the harvesting of mushrooms, the hatching of poultry, the construction, operation, and maintenance of ditches, canals, reservoirs, waterways, used exclusively for farming purposes, handling, planting, drying, packet, packing, packaging, processing, freezing, grading, storing, and delivering to storage or market, or to a carrier for transportation to market, or for direct sale of any agricultural or horticultural commodity as an incident to ordinary farming operations, or in the case of fruits and vegetables, as an incident to preparation of such fruits and ve, or vegetables for market or for direct sale. The term farm includes farm buildings and goes on about that. So that's the definition in the statutes as to what agriculture and farming is.
And I do appreciate, and I, I get that from her, and I, I apologize if in any way I'm trying to send you that I don't understand that one. I am trying to say there is very good definitions of what counts for chicken coops in here. There is a specification of no roosters, there is a specification of no free range, seems like it covered everything under this. I am only asking that we have had people who have been upset when certain things have been allowed under the deeming of doing farming. And I am wondering if this would give us essentially a worse position to stand on if we have someone who comes in and let's say they have a forty acre lot and they clear it and say, well, I'm going to be using this for farming. So therefore I have the right based on your regulation. Now, this regulation specifically only talks about chicken coops. But I am just wondering if there is going to be a legal issue that we run into there by including that it says agriculture or, because this textament only deals with chickens. It, I mean, I suppose it technically, I actually don't know, because it, it's only saying chickens in here, so I don't know if they were to raise something that is not a chicken, but is still counting as poultry, I don't know where that gets in there. There are, I mean, there's technically other things.
If you're raising pigeons?
I don't know, something else, you know? Quails.
Quails.
Could do the quail eggs or something.
That would be poultry, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's poultry, but this only deals with chickens.
Correct. Other agricultural uses would have to, in the R twelve, get a special permit. So.
I just, so we're, we're assured that despite the fact that this says say agricultural farm poultry use, that it would only apply to chickens. Because again, if that's the case and we have no legal issue besides that, then I can't think of any reason why this would be against the P O C D. But I am just curious if this is going to be a problem where it could be for something else that is unintended consequences. Clearly, this is a great thing on here, if we hadn't already had regulation about this, it would seem like this is an awesome thing for us to be doing. I, just makes me worried about any unintended consequences.
We're basically just determining whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the P O C D.
I feel like we need to know that.
Yeah.
For the P O C D though, right?
Well.
Well, we, we. We, we know that there are recommendations in the P O C D, so I think, um, whether or not this uh, amendment is, you know, that our recommendations will be, does this, does this match, does this change? Is it supported by things in our P O C D?
I, I think the chicken coop thing absolutely is, I don't know if anybody here would.
I think that's our charge really.
I understand, but that is not what this amendment says. And that's the, I want to make sure that this is right so that we are not making an issue. If someone could tell me that there is a legal thing that says, yep, it will only apply to the coops and that is the only thing that it is going to apply to, but it doesn't say, it says agriculture or farm and poultry. And I'm just trying to make sure that we are, I get it, some of you guys want to go home. But I just want to make sure that we're not going to open up an issue for us and then everyone's going to be asking, why did this, these guys let this happen?
Well, basically, the zoning commission is going to make a determination.
I understand, but it is our job to determine if this is so applied with the P O C D.
Recommend that you either find it consistent or inconsistent with the comments that there's no definition of agriculture, with the exception of that, that's in the, in the wetland regulations, which comes from the statute.
Yeah.
Um, so if we were to lean on that for as a definition of agriculture, well, you just permitted it as a right on a one acre lot in the R twelve.
Yeah.
I think.
We can add it to the.
So I would note that they really need to either limit that to just poultry and then the agricultural or farm use is by special permit. That's how it's written there, agricultural farm use. And then comma, including the raising of livestock and poultry. So they're clearly identifying agriculture, that runs the gamut of all those things I just read. It includes poultry, so I would think they'd want to maybe just say, instead of putting, just say farm poultry. You know, instead of agriculture, unless their intent is to add agriculture, and if that's the case, well then, I think you may be seeing more issues in the future.
Yeah.
We can comment on that in the motion, but I noticed that the, the closest thing I can see in the P O C D is in the agricultural section in the recommendations. Uh, consider adopting a, well, uh, consider adopt, adopting additional permitted agriculture uses and residential loans. While B Keating has recently added as an allowable use in many residential loans, other similar, similar homescale agricultural uses could be explored. That's the closest thing I could find.
Saying to look for other possible agricultural uses, which this would be one of those.
Right.
So in my opinion, I, I do find it's consistent with the plan of development. Um, I think Nick brings up a good point, you may want to define the word agriculture.
Yeah, and, and just to the current regulation, I do have, it doesn't appear to be, so please, just to Mr. Chair, if anyone can notice, there is, is there, does not appear to be any change to the no animals or poultry shall be kept less than one hundred feet from any property line. I don't see any change in there, is, would this simply override that, or is it just in addition, because it wouldn't seem like that'd be a big problem.
You can comment on that in the motion, I think, if you.
Feel more comfortable that way.
Yeah, I would put all those comments as, you know, things to note.
Right, to read. Okay, that's what I get.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
Concerns? Um, does anyone want to commit a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion that we would accept this, but with the recommendation that agriculture be clearly defined. I don't know if it needs, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that one. Before I bit, though, I should say again, I think these regulations are wonderful, it really does go into this one. I do think that to be implied through the P O C D, I think that we need to make a recommendation in here, and Mr. Chair, I'm going to make that recommendation, that we would approve this with the condition that agriculture, or excuse me, I, I used to, the recommendation that agriculture be more clearly defined.
We can say it's consistent with the P O C D, but we have, uh, concerns with the definition of.
That it be more clearly defined.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any other comments?
All in favor? I, all opposed? Any extensions? Nope. Thank you. Nothing, uh, missed referrals, we don't have any, under old business subdivision regulations, Section four, application submission procedure, Gary, do you have any updates?
Uh, I did meet with Attorney Tim Pleasdale, we went over those changes, um, we're still going through them, uh, as they're relatively extensive. So we're probably going to set up another meeting, uh, just to finalize modifications that we need to make. Um, I may invite Tim here to kind of just talk with the commission, so I might speed things up as far as the changes that we need to make. Rather than kind of going back and forth between the three of us, so I'm going to try to arrange that with him. Uh, I know to come to, you know, try to get that done before the end of the year, we're going into an election, so it's just kind of timing wise, and so if there's any change with this board, um, in January, you know, I hope we're not.
In December, we're starting all over again, right?
Well, the terms would, and go to the end of the year, right? So then, we're potentially looking at a new board in January, so, or semi.
Okay.
So I, I just don't want to have to redo everything, so once we get the ball started. That being said, as a commission initiated application, we don't have to worry about time, statutory timeframes. We do on the publication of the public hearing and the opening, but once it's open, you can run it indefinitely if you want to. Then we just have to worry about the changes we make to the document so that we don't go too far away from the original intent, so that, that gets a little more tricky. So we want to try to keep the intent and the language as similar, you know, as we can. If we substantively change something significantly, that might be problematic as it relates to the legal act, but I'll, I'll iron that out with Tim.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, new business, how do we have any, um, I can entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?